Walk on the red carpet. But don't be fooled. The night will still be star-studded, giving the-
We don't care. What an idiot. Who did that? That's what they pay me for.
I just turned it on so you could stop.
Okay, at this time we'll open- Ms. Beller, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Fawn.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Broadwater.
Here. At this time, we'll have the invocation by Susan Emery and then we'll have the flag salute done led to us by Mr. Jones.
Dear God, we gather to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag of our great nation and say the pledge together with me. The pledge is-
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we judge us all.
It's my understanding that we have several presentations this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to give the first presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to acknowledge ten outstanding local students selected as ambassadors to represent the city of Garden Grove in the 25th Annual Sister City Exchange Program to Anyang, South Korea. Through the Sister City Exchange Program, Garden Grove's youth have a unique opportunity of experiencing Korean culture firsthand. The students, along with chaperones Cam Mangles and Susan Gonzalez, will serve as Garden Grove's goodwill ambassadors during their ten-day stay. During their visit, they will be staying with Korean families who have graciously opened their homes and hearts to host the students and chaperones. At this time, I would like to call forward the students present and give a brief introduction of each. I ask that each of you please stay up front after being called so a group photo can be taken. Okay, first, we're going to start with Stephanie N. Cisco. A junior at Rancho Alameda's High School, Stephanie keeps very busy playing music and being active in the National Honor Society Associated Student Body, or ASB, and Student League. She sees herself working with animals in the future and hopes to major in pre-veterinary studies. When asked why she applied to the Sister City Student Exchange Program, Stephanie said, "I hope to expand my knowledge about different cultures. I believe that education not only comes in textbook form, but also through experiences." Our next student is Sunny Gill. Sunny is a senior at Garden Grove High and is a member of the California Scholarship Federation. He is also the vice president of the National Honor Society, Avid and Medical Exploration, Discovery and Career, or MEDIC. As if that doesn't keep him busy enough, Sunny is also the president of the Spirit Squad and varsity captain of the track and field team. He hopes to major in psychology or biology at USC or UC Santa Barbara. The next student is Brian Wong. Brian is a junior at La Quinta High School. He's an ASB and his class president. Brian is an avid water polo player and volleyball player. He wants to major in engineering at one of the University of California campuses or at USC. While in Korea, Brian hopes to immerse himself in a new environment and also enjoy other traditional values. The next student is Gwendolyn Martinez. Currently a senior at Rancho Alameda's High School, Gwendolyn is involved in ASB, Student League, Club Herencia, National Honor and Sociedad Honoraria- excuse my Spanish- Espanica. Her plan is to major in psychology at UC Irvine or UC Riverside and become a pediatric orthopedic surgeon. Our next student is Susanna Perez. Susanna is a senior at Garden Grove High School, and she enjoys playing soccer in her spare time. Her favorite subject is Spanish. She plans to major in Spanish at Cal State Channel Islands or Humboldt State and become a high school teacher. The next student is Jago Santos. Jago is a senior at Garden Grove High School who enjoys playing tennis and swimming, and she is a junior black belt in martial arts. She's the president of the girls' league, the treasurer of Mathematical Science Achievement Club, and a member of the National Honor Society. Jago hopes to major in mechanical engineering at UC Berkeley, UC San Diego, USC, or Stanford. Through the Sister City Student Exchange Program, Jago hopes to learn about Korean history and culture. The next student is Rachel Tang. Rachel is a senior at Pacifica High School, and one of her many talents is speaking three different languages. Rachel enjoys running cross-country and track and field. She is the president of the National Honor Society, treasurer of the interact club, and co-founder of the women's league on campus. Rachel was accepted to UCLA and will be majoring in international relations, economics, or business. Now, we have Calvin Tran. Calvin is a senior at Bolsa Grande High School, and the goal in life is to travel the world. He's president of Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Club. Calvin hopes to major in chemical engineering at UC Irvine or UC San Diego and work in the energy field. When asked what he hopes to learn from this trip, he said he's looking forward to meet his host family in Korea and learning about their history, what they eat, what interests them, and what they love. Next, we have Tao Tran, who is a junior at Garden Grove High School, and her future goal is to reduce human suffering. Tao is a president for American Red Cross on campus, an ICC representative for the National Honor Society, and a member of the California Scholarship Federation. She wants to major in global development and humanitarian aid at UC Berkeley. And finally, last but not least, is Conrad Smith. A senior at Garden Grove High School, Conrad is an upcoming graphic artist. He is active in track and field and swimming. Conrad hopes to be a federal district court judge by majoring in political science and English at USC, University of the Pacific, or Columbia University. When asked why he applied to the Sister City Student Exchange Program, Conrad replied, "To immerse myself in a foreign yet distinctly beautiful culture." It's easy to see that this year's students are an outstanding group. They are motivated, civic-minded, outgoing scholars, and the city is proud to have such excellent diplomats represent us in Anyang, South Korea. At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to wish you a safe and memorable trip to Korea and look forward to hearing of your continued successes.
Would you like to come up here and get your picture taken with another group behind us there?
Is Neil actually? Maybe.
Must be done. We'll have this.
Should we do two rows?
Yeah.
Smaller, taller people.
There were those councilmembers behind you too, so.
Who are not very tall, by the way.
There's like an off-screen. Oh, okay. But don't-
I can see the camera. Don't worry.
Pay us. Pay us.
Good lines.
Sorry.
Cam, I'm gonna buy you digital.
One more, one more.
Hey, one more.
One more.
Nice to meet you, Susan. What's your name?
Conrad.
Conrad, okay. I forgot what you were there.
We get a Rancho one?
Where you from? What school?
Hello. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You and Cam?
Hopefully, it's a great trip for you.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, good for you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you so much.
Good to meet you.
This is great.
Good luck, Cam.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Good times.
Nice to meet you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we have a second presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to invite Lisa Teas from the Transportation Corridor Agency to come forward and make a presentation to the council.
Good evening. It's a hard act to follow. Presentations like that make me very confident that our world is going to be in a great place in the future with those type of students coming to lead us. My name is Lisa Teas, and I am the Chief Communications Officer for the Transportation Corridor Agencies, and we have a big announcement we're working on on the toll roads in Orange County, and we're going around to all the cities to let you know because the reality is, even though some people think the toll roads are in south or central Orange County, our southern California is a very mobile society, and people travel all over the place to do business and tourism and everything happening. So I have a quick presentation to let you know what's happening. We just announced yesterday the actual date that we're going to be removing cash toll collection from the toll road, so everything is going to be electronic, and I'll explain to you what we've done to plan for that. It's kind of behind me, sure I can- oh, I see it over here. Okay, great. First of all, the Transportation Corridor Agencies operates the toll roads, not the toll lanes in the area. So the 73, the 133, the 241, and the 261 toll roads is 51 miles in the county. These toll roads were actually the first toll roads in the state of California. It's the largest toll road system at 51 miles in the state. And also, because we were the first and we introduced electronic tolling from day one, we branded the Fast Track logo, and so now you can utilize your transponder, if you have one, all over the state on any toll road, toll bridge, or toll lane in the state. So today, about 250,000 transactions take place on the toll roads, and those are trips that are coming off the 5 and the 55 and the parallel routes. And I mentioned how a lot of people think these are Orange County toll roads, but actually 40% of our account holders live outside the county. So it shows you that Orange County is not only a place people commute within, but people come to for jobs and also through the county. And the value of utilizing a toll road as your choice is a predictable trip, time savings, and less stress. So people who drive the roads often know that once you get on the toll road, sometimes it's a calmer experience because of the views and less traffic in your way as you're traveling. Today, 83% of the people who pay- drive on the toll roads each day pay with a Fast Track transponder and pay electronically. That Fast Track gives you the lowest toll rate overall versus paying with cash, and also it gives you statewide access, so you can use this on all other roads. There is a monthly fee. A lot of people are curious about the fee, and if you spend more than $25 a month per transponder, the fee is waived. Otherwise, it's a $2 monthly fee to have a Fast Track. But because of the toll differential between cash and Fast Track, and also there'll be a differential about what I'm going to tell you about in a moment, if you just need to take about three trips a month, and you'll be- you're going to be pretty much even on the $2 a month fee. So if you're taking more than three trips a month, Fast Track is probably the better solution for you. So, but there are 13% who are paying cash today, and it is really the trend throughout the country and the nation and the world to remove cash toll collection from toll roads. It's happening in Dallas, it's happening in Florida, it's happening in Denver. And the research- we've done a lot of research, and we've been working on this for about three years, this whole process of removing cash toll collection. And when we did a lot of research with our customers, and what they told us is that they knew that the people with the Fast Track account are not having to stop, and they'd rather not have to stop. But the rules associated with the Fast Track account were not working for them, and the main concern is you have to prepay your tolls into the account, and that wasn't working for customers. So while we're removing cash and stopping cash toll collection on the 14th, we have developed some new accounts to address the concerns people have had about why Fast Track didn't work for them. So we're introduced- we've introduced a new account called an express account, and we actually launched this- soft-launched in December, and people have been able to sign up since then. We have over 10,000 people have already signed up for one of these accounts, and they work right now. So you can sign up tonight and drive the toll roads tomorrow, even though not all the signs are there yet. And this will allow you to drive on the toll roads without stopping, and I have a whole list of other benefits here, but basically it utilizes license plate imaging. So a photo is taken, you sign up for an account, you- all you have to do is give us your license plate number, your contact information, and your credit card. You drive on the toll road, and then that day, the transaction will show up on your credit card statement. So if you don't drive very often through the area, you don't have to worry about having a balance on your account. And there's some other options as well, which I'll show you in a moment. So as I mentioned, the express account shows you that you're- you just need your contact information, and you can drive immediately. It works today. Fast Track will continue to be available, and if you have a Fast Track account, you'll know nothing will change for you. And then we have three options under the express account. The charge account, which is turning out to be the most popular, where it charges you that day. You can prepay, because there are some people that just don't like the look of the transponder on their light- on their car, and they'd rather utilize license plate tolling. Or you can be invoiced at the end of the month. With the charge program and the prepay program, there's no fees at all associated with it. You just pay the toll, although there is a higher toll rate, which is generally about 20% differential between a Fast Track and an express account. The invoice will have a month of fee for- a $2 fee for processing. So the question is, okay, I don't have an express account, I don't have a Fast Track account, traffic's really bad, I have a meeting in south Orange County, and I want to get on the toll road, what do I do? We have an option called one-time toll, which is a way you can pay after your trip within 48 hours, and basically that stopgaps the violation process. So you can go online, we also have a mobile app, and you can pay the toll and therefore do it after the fact if you get into that situation. This is put in- put into place, really, we're working a lot of outreach with the tourism industry, and we're working with concierges and rental cars to let them know how there are people who travel through this area can also use this one-time toll feature. So there's going to be a change to signs. We'll catch up here. Oops. There's going to be a change to signs, and just for your information, this purple color is the national color for electronic tolling. So if you're ever driving across the country and you see this purple color, you're probably near or on a toll road, so just something to be aware of. We also, with the launch of the actual date that will end cash toll collection yesterday, we also announced a promotion we're doing. So if you sign up for an express account or Fast Track, you can drive your first week free. So if you're- you sign up today, all week until next Tuesday night, you can drive as many trips as you'd like all over the toll roads and check out how they work. Just other example, also, I mentioned the one-time toll program, I talked about this, is really for infrequent drivers, but you can pay within 48 hours. At our website is the- pretty simple, the tollroads.com. And finally, because this tends to be the number-one question I get after a presentation is, okay, I have Fast Track. How do I- what do I need to do? Do I need to change? You don't have to change anything. If you have a Fast Track account, you'll still have the lowest toll, and you can use it on the 91 Express lanes, you can use your Fast Track on the 10 and the 110 lanes in Los Angeles, and even the Golden Gate Bridge, if you travel up north, you can use your Fast Track account. So one final thing, in October, we actually celebrated the 20th anniversary of the first toll road in Orange County and the introduction of Fast Track. So it's surprising to think that they've been around for that long, but we're looking at 20 years, and we're working towards now the future of tolling, which is all electronic. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, or... Good? Okay. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
You fooled me. You had that first clip that says, "No more pain."
Oh, you thought we were going to be-
I got happy.
Oh. No, just the cash stops, so we're still going to collect tolls electronically. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will go to oral communications. And we'll hold this simultaneously for the successor agency also. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Celebrities today seem to be notorious for getting their names in their paper for things like driving under the influence, spousal abuse, a lot different than the celebrities of times in the past. For instance, during World War II, a lot of the stars, the big stars of Hollywood, joined the services. Some of them included Clark Gable and Jimmy Stewart, who flew bombing raids over occupied Europe. One of them from Hollywood was better known later on as the star of Green Acres. Eddie Albert was awarded the Navy Cross because he kept taking his landing craft in to rescue wounded Marines stranded on the coral reefs at Tarawa. Lee Marvin struggled up the beaches on Iwo Jima, and one of his best buddies later on became better known by another name on television, Captain Kangaroo. One of the stars of television was Mr. Rogers, Mr. Rogers Neighborhood. Mr. Rogers always wore a sweater on the set to cover up the scars from wounds he received in combat. We have lost many of these heroes of the past generation. Recently, we lost another one. Mickey Rooney passed away this past weekend. Mickey Rooney had a career that spanned over 80 years in show business. But interestingly enough, in the Garden Grove edition of the story about Mickey Rooney in The Register, there's a picture of him as grand marshal of our strawberry festival parade, and of all his accomplishments in the show business. It shows in this picture that he was most proud to wear the cap of the American Legion that commemorated for him landing on the beaches of Normandy in 1944. Moving on to another subject. A lot of people have talked to the city council about the heritage of Garden Grove, about our historic buildings, things like that. If you visit the Heritage Center on Euclid, one of the things you'll see is an old fire truck. They bring it out every year for the strawberry festival parade. But most people don't know that before the city of Garden Grove actually became a city, we had a volunteer fire department. That fire department was made up of members of the American Legion posts in Garden Grove. That American Legion post dissolved sometime later, and the members joined the post in Midway City, Post 555. It's a big yellow building on Beach Boulevard across from the Memorial Park. You've probably driven by it hundreds of times, and you notice the vendors out front selling statues and bean bags and mirrors, but you might have wondered what goes on in that building. Well, one of the things that we have is a dinner that we have first and third Fridays of every month, and it's not just for members, it's open to the public. There's a chance to go in, have a great meal for about $8, and the next one is on April 18th, starts at 5:30. The public is welcome to come in, enjoy a great dinner, and who knows, you might be sitting next to one of those heroes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Greg Durfee.
I'm the mayor and council. Last night, I had an opportunity with Sanaa to attend a very important person in the United States. He is president of Alliance in Biking and Walking. He has rode his bike around the world. I have respect for somebody who can do that. If you want, afterwards, I could give you his name. He did a presentation. The bottom line is it increases business, increases community connection, and it's a positive thing for the city. Next is the 14th. We're going to have OCTA, Orange County Bike Safety Workshop, with Sean Nelson, Vice Chair Jeff Lawway, Director Todd Spitzer, and CEO Darryl Johnson to discuss cultivating cycle-safe community in cities. Agencies regarding the plan making cycling a viable, safe choice for community and recreation travel during open discussion. Your input is essential to developing workable solutions that will move cycling safely towards the entire community. I encourage the council to attend, and staff, if they wish, this is put on because of the incidents. We just had a Garden Grove resident that was a former Garden Grove resident in Hinton Beach the other night, about 34, has a 10-year-old son. She got hit, and she went to the hospital, and she passed away. Now, the 10-year-old son is no longer with mom. I think that we've gotten to a point in Orange County that we need to consider zero tolerance, and there is ways to solve this problem. I got plenty of documentation. It's the will of councils, counties, and school officials. I encourage this council to work with the school district, any level you can, using the PA system announcements to the adults who think they're invisible at 16 when driving, 2K through 6, getting rodeos at their schools, encouraging the fire department to, like other fire departments I've read, wearing helmets, encouraging the fire helmet, it's a helmet to the bicycle. You haven't Cyclavia, you have until this closing of school in June to promote bicycle helmets, because Cyclavia comes right behind September. I would encourage the council to ensure that Cyclavia is successful by ensuring that we have a program that markets the safety position with our schools. Also, Channel 7 will put for free public announcements for your event. There are opportunities in the nonprofit, if you can find one, to get private cooperation to fund these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm on a card for the oral communications. Anybody like to speak? That would be the chime. Seeing none at this time, we'll close oral communications. We will recess the city council and go to the successor agency business.
Thank you, Mayor. Call the April 8th meeting of the successor agency to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater.
Here.
Member Nguyen. Member Fawn.
Here.
Vice Chair Beard.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Here. We already did oral communication in conjunction with city council. We'll go to consent items. Just the minutes and warrants.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Thank you. Items for consideration 3A.
Mr. Chairman, that's a consideration of tax allocation bonds, and Mr. Okeriki is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Mr. Chair, board members, with this report, staff is requesting that the city of Garden Grove, our successor agency, adopt attached resolution correcting Resolution Number 18-13, which authorized and approved the refinancing of the 2003 tax allocation bonds. On November 12, 2013, by Resolution Number 18-13, the successor agency authorized the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed forty-five million dollars to refund the 2003 tax allocation bonds. The resolution was approved by the Oversight Board and was also reviewed and approved by the Department of Finance. Essentially, we are ready to move forward with the refunding. However, we realize that Resolution Number 18-13, an indenture that it approved incorrectly recited that the Union Bank loan, the 2008 loan, is secured by tax increment revenue. The corrected indenture tonight dated April 1, 2014, presented with the attached resolution tonight changes that and instead acknowledges that the 2008 loan represents an unsecured obligation of the successor agency, nonetheless payable from tax increment revenues, and it further provides for payment of the 2008 loan on a parity in payment basis with the 2014 refunding bonds. And this clarification is important, not only to set the record straight, but also to avoid misinterpretations that could affect future debt issuances. All of the financial and debt service coverage analysis and cash flow savings related to the refunding of the bonds remains as previously reported, showing actual principal and interest savings from refinancing the bonds of approximately five point nine-nine million dollars over the life of the bonds. In addition, same documents authorizing the successor agency to assemble the financing team that includes the financial advisor, bond counsel, disclosure counsel, fiscal agent, trustee, verification agent, and underwriter, who will be responsible for preparing, marketing, and actually selling the bonds is also here deemed approved. Following approval of the successor agency tonight, the resolution correcting the previous one will be submitted to the Oversight Board for approval tomorrow, and then to the Department of Finance as an informational law date acknowledging the correction of the error. With this approvals, the successor agency will move forward with the assistance of the financing teams that I just mentioned to ready and issue the refunding bonds as soon as possible. Staff recommends that the successor agency adopt a tax resolution which corrects Resolution Number 18-13, authorizing the issuance of the refunding bonds for the 2003 tax allocation bonds. And also authorize the director to transmit said resolution to the Oversight Board for approval, and further to authorize the director or his designated to enter into all other necessary agreements to assemble all the financing teams that I mentioned to effectively ready and issue the refunding bonds. This concludes my report, and I can answer any questions you have. And I also like to point out that we have our bond counsel here tonight, Mr. Kurt Jaeger. He is also available to answer any questions that you may have.
Can I have a quick question? It seems like we're twisting and turning on the words of secure or unsecured, correct?
Right.
Can you just tell for everybody here exactly what does that mean in terms of our obligation to pay this bond, one is secure and one is not secure? What's the difference?
Councilman Kurt Jaeger with Stradling Yaca. In this transaction, Union Bank is cooperating with respect to their loan that is already outstanding. Because they're unsecured, they have asked that we share payments with the bondholders on an even basis. The underwriters at Mitsubishi Securities have indicated that this is acceptable, and they can market the bonds that way. But the way in which the revenues are shared, we still expect will result in an investment-grade rating, but involves a change in the structure that is important to Union Bank, and we believe acceptable to the holders. But in this day and age of DOF review and approval of transactions, we thought it was important, though this change is technical in nature, that we reapprove it so that it will be transparent for the record and for DOF. The payments are shared with Union Bank on the bonds on an even basis, but it is the case that Union Bank doesn't have a prior claim on tax increment. Unfortunately, in the dissolution world, these notions of pledge and claim don't have the same importance or meaning as they did before agencies were dissolved.
So it's my understanding that as far as secure or unsecured, that if you have a secured loan, then in a way which comes to the point where basically you have to dissolve and have to pay off your debt, the secure loans get first dibs, basically, what's there?
That's correct.
An unsecured loan is basically whatever falls behind the secured loan.
That's right. In this case, this sharing that we're doing with an unsecured creditor wouldn't probably work, except that the agency's debts, secured and unsecured, are less than all of the increment that is available to pay those debts. And so the sharing can be done in a way that the rating agencies will be comfortable with it, at least so we hope. We've presented this transaction to a bond insurer and to the rating agencies, and expect a response shortly.
Thank you.
Well, when they pay them back at the same time, doesn't that sort of make the Union Bank insecure?
Yes, sir, it enhances Union Bank's position.
Any other questions for staff? Oh, wait a minute, you're running this.
Any other questions for staff?
Seeing none. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
And we'll adjourn back to city council.
Okay, this time, we'll reconvene, and we'll go to consent items, paragraph number three.
Mayor, it's just items 3A through 3C to be acted on simultaneously unless a discussion is requested by a council member.
I think one of the council members wants to step out on this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on item 3C, and the warrant for 562020 to Horizon Cross Cultural Center. I'm on their board, so it's one abstain from that particular warrant.
Okay, will you step out? I think you have to do that.
Actually, when, he doesn't have a financial, council member Fawn doesn't have a financial conflict on this issue, he can abstain and stay on the dais. If he wants to leave, he can do so as well.
I have no financial interest in the outcome. I volunteer on the board, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you can tell that when you go to jail.
I'll prosecute myself, sir, don't worry.
Okay, we'll move to balance.
Second.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, let's go to 3C. We need a motion and a second on that.
So moved.
Second. Motion received, four yes votes.
Okay, at this time, we'll go to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, your first public hearing is to consider the action plan for fiscal year 1415 for the use of our federal HUD monies, and Allison Mills is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. The item you have before you is the draft 2014-15 Action Plan for the Use of HUD Funds. As a recipient of HUD funds, federal law requires that all jurisdictions who receive community development block grant, home investment partnership, and emergency solution grant funds to prepare an action plan. This action plan specifically identifies how these three types of HUD funds will be allocated to the eleven priority objectives that were identified in the five-year consolidated plan. During the program year, an estimated five point nine million dollars in HUD funds will be available. This includes three point three million in carryover funds from prior years and two point six million in new funds. During 2014-15, HUD funds will address affordable housing improvement and rehabilitation, public services, emergency services, neighborhood improvement, and economic development. We are currently in the public review and comment period for the action plan, which has been available for public review and comments since March 3rd, and will continue until the conclusion of the public hearing tonight. On March 3rd, the Neighborhood Improvement and Conservation Commission held a public hearing to receive comment on the draft action plan. At that meeting, presentations were made by Orange County Fair Housing Council and Fair Housing Foundation. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the commission unanimously recommended that the draft action plan be transmitted to council as prepared by staff, which includes the recommendation to continue funding Fair Housing Foundation as the fair housing service provider. Tonight, you are asked to conduct a public hearing to hear and consider public comments, review staff's funding recommendations, approve the 2014-15 action plan, and authorize the city manager to execute related documents and agreements. That concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff?
A quick question. I had a citizen, I was reading an email, make reference to bonuses, incentive bonuses and housing, affordable housing. Could you comment on that? What are our mandates, what are our requirements?
I believe you're referring to the density bonus ordinance. In 2005, state law was changed in an effort to promote the creation of affordable housing. And in short, what the law states is that if developers meet a certain list of criteria, that they are entitled to an increased density above what our current code would allow. It's required by state, we have to do it.
Okay, in essence, this is not a plan to say we're high density, we're pursuing high density, we're meeting a mandate provided or requirement of the state, correct?
Absolutely. The action plan does not at all promote high density.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. We have some individuals that I remember from last year's public hearing, so they're going to have an opportunity to speak.
Is that a question?
And I got an answer.
The answer is yes.
I got the nod. Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, you had to say that. Okay, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. We've got four cards, here are three cards. Denise Cato?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I am here again. My name's Denise Cato. I'm the president and CEO of the Fair Housing Council of Orange County, and we did present our proposals to your community organization, and they went with staff recommendation. Unfortunately, I want you to look at what we've presented in front of you. I chose a different tactic this year. I said that our agency is good. We're known throughout the state and throughout the country. I want you to look at the letters of recommendations. When you have letters as high as ours to say that we are the best and the programs, unfortunately, city staffers only work with paperwork and statistic numbers. If Garden Grove basically want an agency to produce numbers and not help their community, then you need to go with the foundation. But our agency helps your residents because they're crying for help. We have individuals here that constantly, you know, staff says there's no, basically, complaints. There are complaints daily. We're open every single day from eight-thirty, excuse me, from nine until six. I want you to review it, because my thing is, if I was in the foundation's place, she has letters from city staffers, where's your letters from the community, the individuals that you work with, the individuals that is supposed to respect you? There aren't any letters, because they're not respected in the community. It's amazing to me that I've worked at almost all the fair housing councils through Southern California. I came to Orange County because I came to work with David Cazada, who now is a director in HUD. It's amazing to me that it doesn't feel, he told me that everyone here in Orange County takes care of their own. Well, I've had to lay off resident individuals and staff, not because they weren't doing their job, it's because I didn't have the funds to do it. My staff is certified in everything, if you look through it, from our landlord/tenant department, to our foreclosure department, to our mediation department, to our enforcement department. I have some of the highest recommendations that you can see. I'm a firm believer, if you educate your community to basically run businesses without discriminating, then it benefits everyone. We have letters of recommendations in there from some of the largest management companies in the state of California, and these are individuals that we sued, and now we have a beautiful relationship with them. I would really like for you to reconsider it. Thank you. And if you'd like to ask any questions, please feel free, because we are getting numerous calls. And I am a firm believer, if someone calls us on the phone, we refer them to the foundation. But people who English as a second language, they don't want to have to drive twenty-six miles to go to someone and make an appointment. They have problems, they walk in with paperwork like this. They sit and wait for an hour, if so, to be able to speak to one of our counselors. They need assistance then. You know, people that are poor don't necessarily have cell phones, they can't take off from work and go to little workshops. You know who go to workshops? I did that fifteen years ago. Mommy, stay-home mommies, senior citizen, and people that are middle income, people that are low income and below income, they don't have that type of time, because they're struggling to take care of their families. So when they come in, they need to speak to someone right then, and our agency is there. And as long as I'm in this position, I'm never going to turn anyone away from Garden Grove or any other place in the state of California. I just think that is unfortunately, that cities are going somewhere else because they do great paperwork. Thank you.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
You didn't get any funding from Garden Grove last year, so...
No, we did not.
Did you continue to help the people in Garden Grove?
Absolutely. Anyone that walks in our door, we assist them.
Okay, and out of curiosity, are you familiar with LRS management?
Yes, we are.
Okay, that means you're pretty knowledgeable there.
Well, you know what? I teach at AGLA, the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. I've been teaching there for twenty-four years. I teach at Southern Cities Apartment Association that is in Long Beach.
Why don't you calm down a little bit? We have not done anything wrong to you.
No, I'm not upset.
Oh, you're really, you're at it.
You know, because, you know what? I'm passionate in what I do. I'm not in this for the money. I'm in this because I love what I do. I love Orange County, and I took this position to work in a non-profit organization, because I lived a really great, I had a great childhood, and I was taught basically to give back to the community. Yes, and I teach at Orange County Apartment Association. So as far as landlords and tenants, it's right there. We have recommendations from each and every one of them.
Thank you.
You're so very welcome.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm just passionate in what I do.
And your time's up, so please have a seat.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carol Pham.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Porten, councilmen and staff. My name is Choy Pham, former director of landlord/tenant and HUD department at Fair Housing Council of Orange County for almost twenty years, already retired. I have decided to return to work for Fair Housing Council of Orange County as a member of the Board of Directors, and because a lot of college students, including tenants and landlord and HUD recipients residing in Garden Grove are asking me for my help. When they call me, I told them I already retired. They say, in the past, they have been helped a lot by Fair Housing Council of Orange County. It means people acknowledge Fair Housing Council as the only housing rights agency in which they trusted and thought of when facing any housing problems. Fair Housing Council of Orange County provides landlord/tenant counseling, discriminatory defense against slumlord, mediation process for closure, homeless prevention, outreach, fair housing rights education for the community. Founded in 1965, Fair Housing Council of Orange County is a valuable professional agency for forty-nine years to help constituents of the whole county, including city of Garden Grove. The mission of Fair Housing- The mission of Fair Housing Council of Orange County is protect the quality of life in Orange County by ensuring equal access to housing opportunities, fostering diversity and preserving dignity and human rights. Fair Housing Council of Orange County's evidence is used by U.S. Department of Justice, HUD, California Department of Employment and Housing, many private, both federal and state attorneys, and court proceedings. Fair Housing Council is an important reserving resort tools for housing difficulties for anyone, almost everyone in Orange County, including Garden Grove. Ultimately, Fair Housing Council is a necessary and valued entity for assisting in housing issues. Fair Housing Council needs your help and your continued funding, otherwise it may collapse, resulting in citizens of Garden Grove and other cities in Orange County possibly losing their benefits, just like a domino effect. I strongly and respectfully recommend that you vote yes to support your Garden Grove constituents. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Barbara Scholl?
Yes.
Hold on one second. Just a little sound.
Good evening, Barbara Scholl, Executive Director of the Fair Housing Foundation. Before I go further, I just want to say, I don't want to spend my valuable time up here defending anything that Ms. Cato said. I will be glad to answer all your questions. We've been in existence for 50 years this year, I've been the Executive Director for 23 years. If you want to know our reputation, ask about it. I did not provide letters of recommendation from outside agency, because the RFP that the city put out requested that the letters of reference should be provided by cities that we provide a fair housing service to. That being said, we are in the second year of providing fair housing services to the city of Garden Grove. There are many and numerous, some egregious reasons why 11 cities in Orange County over the past six years have changed to us versus the Fair Housing Council of Orange County. Before I go any further, I do want to address that last year at the city council meeting, the subject that there was some concern that we did not have bilingual Vietnamese-speaking staff. I sent an email to council members Nguyen and Phan back in February advising you that we have cleared that up completely. Want to tell you what we've done. In October of 2013, we hired a Garden Grove resident, Michelle Nguyen. She is a full-time receptionist in the Vietnamese Community Liaison for Garden Grove. So she is the first person in contact when someone calls. If they need services in Vietnamese, she can counsel them. Just to let you know, of the 741 Garden Grove residents we have assisted so far, we have provided non-English services in Spanish to 142 residents, 71 in Vietnamese, four with certified sign language, and another 21 with Chinese, Khmer, and Korean through a contract with certified languages international. So we cover, I think we have the bilingual abilities covered right now, although we could always use additional help, who couldn't. Right now, I believe that what makes us different and successful in the city of Garden Grove is that we bring our services to the city. Regardless of whether you agree that only poor individuals go to someone's office or not, bottom line is that historically and nationally, 95% of all fair housing and landlord/tenant is done over the telephone. That's the same for our organization, it's the same as it is nationally. But mostly, we see people here. So far this year, we have been in the city, meaning a staff person has been in the city conducting some sort of education and outreach 36 times. That's 36 times in nine months. We have a presence here. I'm sure you guys see us, we have walk-in clinics every, is it month? Walk-in clinics that we have here, they come. From those times we've been here, we have assisted over 856 individuals just while we're here in the city. So the city is happy with our services. For all the 22 cities that we do contract with, there's not one complaint. Our reputation does speak for itself, we are all qualified, we have the correct certificates, we are a bona fide fair housing organization, just like all other fair housing organizations in the United States. So I thank the staff for their recommendation to continue contracting with us, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for this young lady?
I have a quick question, ma'am.
Yes.
As far as your flyer that you gave to us here?
Yes.
And you said that you had accomplished 66% of the 2013-14 goals for direct client services?
Correct.
Any reason why there's a disparity between 66% and 100%? Can you explain that?
Who said 100%?
No, I'm saying, as far as why can't we reach 100%?
Because we're not done with the year yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. No, we're just not done with the year yet.
Okay, so it's not like a drop off from, you know, 66%?
No, 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 no. No, we met our, we exceeded our goals last year, and I expect we will do the same this year.
Thank you.
Do you remember often with the 11 cities that added you on this year? You said this year, right?
No, I said in the last six years.
In the last six years?
Yes.
Is it within the area of Garden Grove?
Cities?
Yes. Or is it South County or North County?
I'm a little confused by your question.
Do you remember the cities that you have added on the last six years?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Do you want to know them?
Yes.
Buena Park, Costa Mesa, Fullerton, Garden Grove, Orange, Irvine, Mission Viejo, San Clemente. They're on the fly on the brochure I gave you.
I just wanted to see if they had the same demographic as Garden Grove.
Some of Buena Park has a similar demographic. Huntington Beach is starting to have a little similar demographic, and Westminster recommended us for funding this for next year for the first time, and they have a very similar demographic.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all?
No, please have a seat.
Thank you.
At this time, I have no more names for the open session. Is anybody else like to speak? Hearing none at this time, we'll close it. I'd like to say that I have been in the public, I've been working for the state of California for 28 years, and in my department, we get a lot of complaints. But what I do notice about complaints is that when we get them and then still not happy after somebody talks to them or something else, they go over our heads, they go to the elected official that's over the department. And so a lot of that gets blown back, and we hear about it and everything else. I have been the mayor of this city for 12 years, and I have, I'm in my 12th year now, and I do not recall ever having anybody call to me and tell me that they were upset with our housing section. Never. And believe me, people call me all the time. My phone number's in the phone book, I'm hard to get a hold of, I don't give out my email, that's disastrous, but outside of that, I'm an easy guy to get a hold of. I probably meet with somebody in city hall at least three, four times a week. And I've never had anybody complain about the housing section. One thing I am pretty thrilled about is our staff. I think we got one of the finest staff in the county. Without a doubt, we have the finest staff in the county. And I'm sort of proud of them. I mean, they get awards, they get all kinds of things, they make things happen. And once in a while, there's a clash between council and staff. Staff always loses. So I really, I really think that what's happening in this city is happening right. I am not going to vote to change this. If I got complaints about it, like I'm hearing that you say there are complaints out there, I'm not hearing that. I don't see that happening. Anybody else want to say anything?
Just one point, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification, do we need to vote on this this evening? Is it time-sensitive? Because personally for me, I like to get more educated on the points that were being stated here, and I want to hear all perspective, because tonight, I was reviewing what we were presented, and wasn't quite ready to hear from the opposing side. So if it's not a time-sensitive issue, I would like to have some time to discuss with staff about the rationale behind the recommendation.
Do we have to do the public hearing open again? That's what I want to know.
No, you can close the public hearing.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing's closed.
The action plan has to be submitted to HUD by May 16th, so we have time to revisit this again at another council meeting.
So if I was to get with staff in the next few days to get your backstory or your thinking on this recommendation, would that give us enough time to forward what we need to them?
Yes.
Okay. Respectfully, Mayor, if I may ask to do that, just for my own edification.
I don't have a problem with it.
I support.
You can move to the next council meeting?
Yes, please.
Yes, I have a question for staff. I believe they're both very good agencies, nonprofit agencies, and our housing staff is separate from them, and they do an excellent job, that's why the mayor never hear any complaints. But these are agencies are trying to assist renters and housing individuals out there that need extra help, other than what our staff provide. I'm asking you is, is it a rule that we can only pick one and give all the funds to one, or can we have the option of allocating our funds according to what we believe is helping the community?
There's nothing that says there can be only one.
Okay, and then my other comments is, I want to commend the current one for making all that upgrades for bilingual. I still think that before then, I think more people in the Vietnamese-American community knew of different issues, because there were seminars given by the former ones, and Mr. Coi was in charge of a lot of those seminars and radio ads. And the only way, reason I know is because I speak Vietnamese, and I read Vietnamese, and I knew that that was happening. In the last year, I didn't see, if I missed it, I might have missed it, but I didn't see seminars as much.
It's on the sheet. We did, we've taken seminars so far this year. We've done management training, landlord workshops.
Is that within the Vietnamese community?
Yes.
Okay.
And our bilingual Vietnamese staff person attends those, every single one of them.
Okay.
If I am correct, and I don't, like I said, I don't want to go into he said, she said, but I don't believe most of the sessions at Orange County Fair Housing had, were in the city of Garden Grove. Most of them were held in Santa Ana or Anaheim.
They were held in like a central forum, and you're right, it's not in Garden Grove. They were held where...
Yours in Garden Grove.
Just a second. They do where most Vietnamese go to for news. And in order for them to know of the seminars, they do have to be able to read it on the newspaper or see on television ads, so if you haven't done that, I would suggest maybe you can add that onto your process.
I believe that Allison oversees or helps us make sure that it's on public cable channel.
Well, I won't go into that, but I'm just saying, I didn't see any this year, and I want to see if staff can look into the rule of, can we allocate some of the funds over to people who are also helping? Because I don't believe in receiving help and not paying for the volunteers or the resources the volunteers need in order to do their job. And it's always good to have two people working for us rather than one. And I think you've done a good job and made some improvement from last year. I don't think that you've done a bad job, but I think we do need added help in other areas with the staff from the other one that is more familiar and is closely working with the Vietnamese-American community. And I know they also work with the Latino community, and so does this side. But I think everyone's already really used to that system in the Vietnamese-American community. That's why I was concerned last year, and I still share that concern, because as a lawyer for landlord/tenant, most people come and they do want to see someone where they can ask a question. They don't do it over the phone, they need to see you, they need to hear you speak, they need to show you certain things on the paperwork, what to do, how to do it, go to court, go to file applications. You can't do that over the phone. So I think if an organization is offering to do it in person, I think that's very personable and helpful to Garden Grove citizens. So if staff can relook at everything and maybe do some more studies on how we can help everybody. And I second Councilmember Nguyen, I'm sorry, Councilmember Phan's recommendation to move this to the next meeting.
Okay, we don't have to vote on that. We'll do it. Bring it back to the next meeting, please. Okay, let's go to our second public hearing, which is spring weed.
Yeah. Sabrina Saltis is here to give a staff report on our spring weed abatement notice.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to hold a public hearing regarding the notices that were sent to the property owners in February. It's recommended that council receive testimony from the members of the public and take unimproprate action, which could be upholding any objections and directing staff as to how to proceed from here, overruling any objections and directing staff to continue with the weed abatement process, and if there are no objections, directing staff to continue with the weed abatement process. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Is Union Pacific Railroad on the list again?
Yes, they are.
Constantly.
They're the only ones on the list, correct?
Yes, three of their eight lots are still on the list.
We had to double the price of that, you know.
We did recently raise the prices within the last two years, so prices have gone up.
It's way over market price now, and it still let us do, forced us to do that. Okay, we'll go forward. Anybody like to speak on that issue? We'll open the public hearing. Weed abatement?
No.
Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing. I'll be interested in a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a second call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we'll go to matters from the city council. Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, we saw the sister city Young Ambassadors tonight, and it's another good crop. It's very pleasing and delightful to see such a fine group of students going forward, representing, being our youth ambassadors for our sister city on Young. Well, with that, we're having our first 5K run associated with that, part of Strawberry Festival, and now's the time to look into signing up. I think Councilmember Phan and I are going to be racing against each other. No. So, but I plan to participate, waddle or walk, one way or the other. It's a great cause, it's a great event, it's a part of the Strawberry Festival, so I encourage those runners out there to sign up, look on the website, and enjoy. I want to comment on the progress being made on Valley View in Euclid. The traffic situation is improving in one direction, it's getting closer to completion. We have the southbound lanes on Valley View, I know that well, that's my area town, that's been opened up, and that's released a lot of traffic, and so that's very pleasing to see. It's still a work in progress, and there's light at the end of that tunnel, I'm looking forward to that, but now it's going north, and we'll just have to endure a little longer to the citizens out there. citizens out there. It looks like Euclid is also moving along nicely. I have a question. Is tonight the last night for Mr. Clark as well, the last council meeting? Okay. Okay, I'll hold off on my comments on that. Some glad and sad news. Glad for him, sad for the city. And I just want to let people know that the Garden Grove Pride Award competition's going on right now, so if you see cars going out and people looking at your homes, that's a good thing. We have some beautiful homes out there, and it's a great program. We recognize those homes that have kept up their homes and done a fine job to represent the city well, represent themselves, their neighborhoods well. But it's a great program, and I look forward to going to the award ceremony for that. With that, that's it for me tonight.
Thank you very much. Dina?
Thank you for being out there tonight, and thank you for tuning in to the city council meeting today. I agree with Chris. We have a very fine young group this time representing us to go to on young, and we continue to have more and more very good young people in our city, and that's why I worry about our city, and I want to protect our city for the future of our children. That's the reason why I went to Irvine earlier before our meeting, and they said, "What does Garden Grove have to do with Irvine?" Well, everything, besides the human rights that a lot of Vietnamese Americans share. I feel like we have been upside down in our economy, partly because of foreign investors. They bought land, commercial buildings, businesses here, and they have raised the price, and that's why a lot of our businesses, small businesses, has to move out because they can't pay the rent anymore. So we have a very unfair competition from cash buy from overseas, and especially from Vietnam where they have gotten that money from corrupt government. Secondly, when they buy houses, I do real estate law, and a lot of couples come into my office, and they say, "I have 20% down and approval for about $400,000 to buy a house in Garden Grove or Westminster or maybe Fountain Valley." And every time they put in a bid, they've been outbid by a cash buyer investor from Vietnam. So our young people can't even buy homes here, and that's why I went to Irvine to tell them, "We are their sister city. It isn't the city in Vietnam that's their sister city. They need to protect their sister city. We're part of this county, the state, and this nation." So we share a lot in common with them, not the other city from a country that is communism. And on the same note, those people who bought the homes here, they don't live here. So they rented out and they slum it out, and they build and build and build into 10 different bedrooms and one 6,000 square feet lot, and that's when we need help. Our citizens need help in filing complaints with housing, and our housing department only does Section 8. We don't deal with that. And that's why we need those ladies out there to help us. So the more that are able to help us, the better. And once again, buy in Garden Grove, buy USA-made, support our own. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to bring to the community's attention that this Saturday, we have an OC Autism Festival that we're hosting from 12 to 3 over at the St. Ansem's Church on Galway Street. I invite you to come out there. If you have family members who has this condition or want to learn more about it, please come out. This is this Saturday. Along the lines of running the race there, Councilman Beard, I was going to actually make a wager with the city, using my brother as bait, that if they can beat my brother and whoever lives in Garden Grove, I would buy them dinner. Unfortunately, my brother just called me today from Virginia. He's actually pushing out on his first deployment. He's with the U.S. Navy. I won't specify which branch or which section he's with for his security, but he'll be gone for the next few months, so you can just keep him in your prayers that he'll be coming back to safe and sound. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one kind of exciting announcement. This past weekend, myself and probably at least a dozen of us in a contingency from Garden Grove traveled up to Los Angeles and participated in their Siklavia Open Streets event. This was a blast, and the founder and executive director of Siklavia in Los Angeles named Aaron Paley was gracious enough to make an announcement in his opening remarks that Garden Grove is ahead of the pack and leading Orange County in the planning stages of hosting the first Siklavia-type open streets event in Orange County, potentially scheduled for this October 12th, 2014, 10/12/14. So everyone, including council, will be seeing more about that in the coming weeks and months, and something exciting that we can all rally behind and bring to Orange County.
First of all, Mr. Barrett said that the first 5K he's coming to Garden Grove, but he's wrong. The 35th anniversary of the city, they did a 5K run. One of the fellows that ran in the 5K run became mayor of the city. He won't be doing that again. Anyway, the Siklavia, I went up there and saw it too. I think it's great. I think it's something to look forward to. I think we're going to have a lot of fun with it when it comes, and it ought to be great for everybody. And with that, we will close up until what? The 22nd?
Yes.
Okay, 6:30, 22nd. Be here.